Hank aged ninety and recently passed and will be deeply missed. Would you please join us in a moment of silence for Mr. Hank Cahill? Okay, thank you. Please be seated. We have a few. First, Senator John Keening- Keenan will hold office hours Wednesday, November 30th, from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM in the Ware Room at Abington Town Hall. Senator Keenan will be available to answer questions about legislation on Beacon Hill or try to help with any state-related issues. All constituents are welcome. Also, during the month of December, the Police Department, along with the Suller Tavern, will be conducting a local food drive. People can drop off their non-perishable food items in the station lobby or at the Suller Tavern. All proceeds will be sent to the St. Vincent De Paul Food Pantry here in Abington. Also, the volunteer effort to make over Mark Chirokus's house was a huge success. The project was organized by Park and Rec Commissioner David LaRosa, and the Board of Selectmen would like to thank all of the volunteers who donated their time. Also, the following members of the business community donated their goods and services to the project. We would like to thank Cape Cod Lumber, Elliott Tree, La Point Construction, Trukey's, Stop and Shop, Lowe's, Home Depot, Seon's Landscaping, Eastern Cedar, The Suller Tavern, Martin's Bakery, Needle Brothers Landscaping, South Shore Lumen Gravel, Lambert's, Mira Gaza, Rosie's Wine, Abington House of Pizza, A.C. Moore, Plymouth Plantation, Mattson Glass, D-Sac Disposal, Abington Athletic Club, Rockland Cement and Block, Hanson Tree, and Jay Nails &amp; Spa. Also, a special thank you to the Abington High Football Program and PAC 11 of the Abington Boy Scouts, and we apologize if we missed anybody. Again, the event was a huge success.
Just a side note on that. I talked with Mark Chirokus today. He's home. The cleaning of the house almost sent him back in the hospital. He was able to weather the storm, and he's doing much better. He's in remission, and he's-- we'll have to-- that's one part. The other part is that they now have to go through remediation in getting the cancer out of his blood, which will take another several months of therapy, chemotherapy, and probably a stem cell transplant.
That's good to hear he's home. Thank you for that update, John. Also, this is from the Abington Public Schools. It's a vacancy notice. Abington Public Schools vacancy notice, school committee member. Position will be filled by the joint appointment of the Abington Board of Selectmen and School Committee. Person appointed to fill the vacancy will hold the office until the next regularly-scheduled annual town election, at which time the vacant position shall include on the ballot. Interested Abington residents are asked to please forward a statement which sets forth in clear, specific terms the qualifications which he or she holds for the position by Wednesday, December 7, 2011, to the Abington Board of Selectmen, care of John DiAgostino, Abington Town Manager, Abington Town Hall, 500 Glenowick Way, Abington, Mass. 02351, and to the Abington School Committee CO., Peter Schaefer, Superintendent of Schools, Abington Public Schools, 171 Adams Street, Abington, Mass. 02351. Does anybody else have any public announcements?
Great, Mr. Dunn.
I'd like to congratulate on behalf of the board the Abington Peewee Football Team who attained the Division IV Championship last couple of weeks ago, and also the Abington Mights and Midgets who actually made it to the Super Bowl. So, we want to extend our congratulations to all those young kids.
You can watch it on cable TV because they're replaying it.
Are they? Good. Excellent.
It's better than watching us, I bet.
Exactly.
I have something also.
Go ahead.
On December 10th, Saturday, there is a voluntary e-waste collection event for Abington-area towns at the Abington High School. It's a chance by the South Shore Recycling Cooperative, which Abington is a member of. You can come up here and, for no fee, televisions, computer monitors, laptops, DVDs, anything electronic, keyboards, cell phones, VCRs. They don't-- they won't take stoves or washing machines, but people will take those for the money anyways. But this is a good chance. You don't have to pay a fee at the compost site to get rid of them. You don't have to call somebody to get rid of them. You don't have to put them in your trash. So, it's going to save the weight. We're not going to have to pay the tonnage for the weight of them. So, please bring it up there. And this notice is on the town of Abington website, too, so if you want more information.
Thanks, Kenny. Mike?
I just had two. The Friends of the Abington Seniors Incorporated will be holding a breakfast with Santa on Saturday. That's this coming Saturday, December 3rd, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon at the Abington Senior Center, 441 Summer Street. Admission is $5, includes a pitch with Santa. Children under four are-- get in for free, and a gift shop will be available. And the second item is the Old Town Christmas House Tour. The 2011 Old Town Christmas House Tour will be held on Saturday, December 10th, and Sunday, December 11th to benefit Abington's tricentennial celebration and the restoration of the arch and bridge at Island Grove. Tickets are $30 for Saturday's candlelight tour, which will be held from 5:00 to 8:30 PM, and $25 for Sunday's day tour, which will be held from noon to 4:00. Tickets are available at Busy Beaver Gift Shop, The Christmas Place, the Abington Public Library, Vinodetti's, Mira Gaza, the Abington Bank, the Abington Ale House, Seon's Garden Center, and Resell Therapy Consignment Shop in South Weymouth. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. First on our agenda, we have a joint meeting with the Water Commissioners to fill a vacancy on the water board. However, our only candidate has withdrawn his application. So, that joint meeting with the Water Commission has been canceled.
Do you want to re-advertise it? Start the process over?
Can I adjourn a motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion that we re-advertise in accordance with the charter.
Okay. We have a motion. Second. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous, John. All right. Next on the agenda, transfer commercial garage license, 271 Washington Street. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, November 28, 2011, at 6:45 PM in the Carter Hearing Room, 500 Glenowick Way, on the application of Alexandro Roca, Rio Auto Abington, Inc., DBA Mineki Car Care Center to transfer the commercial garage license from Lordas Incorporated, DBA Mineki Car Care, 271 Washington Street. I'd like to adjourn a motion. Open the hearing.
I'm going to recuse myself. I represent Lordas.
Okay.
So, another-- so, please.
Selectman Burbine recuses himself. I need a motion.
Should we?
Oh, it's not 6:45.
It's not 6:45.
Oh. All right. Well, let's--.
Just in case there are any others.
Sure. All right. So, we'll hold that for now. Let's move on. What else can we move on to?
You can go down to the approval of minutes.
All right. Approval of minutes. I need a motion to approve the open session minutes of November 7.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. It's unanimous. The minutes of November 7th, open session, have been approved. November 7th, executive session.
So moved. Not to be released along that as a settlement.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. November 7th, executive session. Accepted. All right. Let's see. What else?
We can do that next one.
Approval of Tricentennial Parade?
The vote to allow the Old Town Christmas House Tour Committee to use the town seal.
Okay. Yeah, we'll do number three. Vote to allow the Old Town Christmas House Tour Committee to use the town seal.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Done. All right. Number--
What about the approval of parade?
Yeah.
Yeah. Number two. Approval of Tricentennial Parade on June 10th, 2012. I'll read the letter written by Mr. Bailey here. Find it.
By Mr. Bailey?
Is that who wrote it?
Yep. The Abington Tricentennial Committee would like to ask your permission to hold a parade to celebrate the town's birthday on Sunday, June 10th, 2012, at 1:00 PM. Current plans call for parade to begin on Washington Street and Abington Center. The route will follow Washington Street to Adams Street to Route 58 to Route 139, taking a right onto North Ave to Railroad Street. The parade will end in North Abington Center, probably at about where the cellar is located, I would imagine.
Same way for the--
And we hope that the Board of Selectmen will be able to participate and help us celebrate the town's special day. We thank you in advance for your consideration and assistance. Sincerely, Jack Bailey, Parade Chairman.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. It's unanimous. All right. Hold on. Let's get caught up here. How long's your town report, John?
No.
No. Okay. Hold on. Wait a second.
Well, I can make it as quick as--
No, we're-- actually, we're just about at 6:45.
Here, I've got two minutes. I can probably condense it down about 30.
All right. Hold on.
How about the grant application? Want to take a look? Mr. Chairman, how about the Attorney General's ruling?
Okay. That's-- we can do that. I thought that was going to be a few-- that's going to be a few minutes. John, would you care to open that discussion? Number four under Action Discussion Items, discussion on new releases from Attorney General as voted at the annual town meeting, April 2nd, 2007.
Yep. Mr. Chairman, we received an advisory opinion from counsel regarding our ability, the town's ability, to have a meeting in which a member could be absent but yet participate in the meeting if the town has accepted General Law Chapter 39, subsection 23D. This local acceptance statute allows board members to be absent from one session of a public hearing and still participate and vote subject to certain conditions. At the annual town meeting, Article 10 of the May 2nd, 2007 Annual Town Meeting, we accepted that statute. The regulations that were promulgated by the Attorney General's Office will allow participation by absent members based on certain criteria and requirements. If by telephone, internet, or satellite enable an audio or video conferencing, or both, can be used in what is called a remote participation of an absent member in a meeting held by a body, in this case, the Board of Selectmen. For example, this statutory regulation, CMR 940, CMR 29.10, will allow, for example, when we had this deadlock vote on four, and four, we had a member in the military on the school department side, the school committee side, that person, if we were able to teleconference him in by telephone, internet, or satellite, would be able to participate in the meeting as long as we can confirm who-- his identity, and he would be able-- he or she would be able to vote. Because we've accepted General Law 3923D, we have already satisfied that requisite, prerequisite, and now can look forward to the meeting on the 19th. We have now posted for the opening, for that joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee. If we need to have a member who's absent participate, if he so desires, that person can now do so under these regulations.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would make a motion that under a "Rebel and Suspenders" approach, if you would, that we approve authorization of, in accordance with 940 CMR 29.10, to allow remote participation to all boards and committees subject to the open meeting law in the town of Abington.
No seconded. Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Now, John, is there a procedure that confirms the voice on the table?
We will establish a procedure so that we can verify the individual. In other words, in the case, if on the 19th, we have a member absent that wants to participate in our joint meeting, that person, we would be able to teleconference in. We have the technology to do that. Teleconference that person in and have them participate. Now, the verification process can be as simple as we would send in our email to this individual who would confirm receipt of the email, that we would provide a set of instructions for him to respond to. Now, we would ask for a confirmation, let's say that we use Bravo, and he confirms that with Delta or some combination of requests that we would make through the email. We would then have that individual identified as the individual who should be participating in this meeting. If we can make that kind of verification, that person participates in the meeting, the email would go only to him, and it would be an encrypted email that only he could read, and that he would be able to identify his instructions on his end. We would have a set of instructions on our end, and we would be able to identify the individual.
All right. Any further discussion? Questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. It's unanimous. Okay. Want to get back to the transfer of the commercial garage license at 271 Washington Street. Selectman Burbine recuses himself. I need a motion?
Open the hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The hearing is open. Would-- is someone here to represent the-- please take the mic and introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Douglas Machado, and I represent Alejandro. He's my partner, and I represent Mineki Car Care Center.
Okay. You are the-- you're the buyer?
I'm the buyer.
You're the buyer. Okay. Do you-- any changes in hours?
No. Me, we-- the regular hours from Mineki is 7:30 to 6:00, and it looks like the previous one was working 8 to 6:00.
Okay. All right. Any questions from the board?
Yeah. If you could, just explain, if you could, what your operation will consist of and what you intend to do, and how many vehicles you have.
I mean, we are completely car care, and we have a four base, and we are looking to have, you know, four cars inside and parking spot for three employees and about seven spots for customers somewhere in the, you know.
Okay. And you understand that this is just for a commercial garage license, and there's no cars for sale?
No. Yeah, we know that.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions?
They've received approval from all of the inspectional departments as well.
Yeah, they can today.
No questions.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion?
No. I think it's a-- I think as we have in the past, we are now requiring the different organizations to, particularly for commercial garage licenses, to stripe the parking lot.
That was for auto dealers.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Should it mark the-- because there's nobody being marked?
I mean--
We did that, I'm sorry, for the actual sale of cars.
Dealers. Yeah.
I think we-- Mr. Chairman, I think we suggested that. I don't think we made it mandatory.
No, I don't believe that we made it mandatory, no, but--
I think we should, to be honest with you.
Okay.
It's only where you can enforce it.
Yeah. Well, some licenses are contingent on, you know, they have a number of vehicles attached to them. This doesn't have a number of vehicles attached to the license. What's pleasure of the board? Oh, I'm so sorry. Open it to the floor. Would anyone like to speak to this?
In terms of what? Number of cars?
No. No. Would anyone-- does anyone--
Any abuddists?
Any abuddists have any questions about this hearing? Okay. I entertain a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The hearing's closed.
Mr. Chairman, I move we grant the license as indicated.
No second. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. It's unanimous except for 4 to 1. Selectman Burbine understands. Next. All right. Next on the agenda, Veterans of Foreign War 30, Central Street, change of manager. Okay.
Move we open the hearing?
Hold on. Yep. Hold on a second here. Where is my hearing notice? It'll be held by the Board of Selectmen. Hold on. Let me read this down. A public hearing will be held by the Board of Selectmen on Monday. Nope, that's the wrong one. I'm going to kill John Jacob. Scrubbing down.
Change of manager? Yes. Public hearing notice is not required.
Yeah. This is just a change of manager.
It's not an advertised public hearing.
Okay. Just come up and introduce yourself.
Mr. Chairman, just a matter of disclosure, I want to announce that I am a member of the VFW.
Of course you are.
Fine. I was advised to do so.
Okay.
My name is William Jones. I am a member of the Abington VFW and applying for the manager job.
Okay. Are you tip-strained?
Yes, I am.
Okay. That's great. Same hours?
Might even shorten them, but yes, basically. I'm not changing anything major.
Okay. Do you have any prior experience in managing a liquor establishment?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I have been assisting the previous manager and the quartermaster over the past year and a half, two years.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Move we approve the transfer.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Hold on a second. All right. All right. Next on the agenda, discussion on the town's proposed grant application to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development for funding from its fiscal year 2012 Community Development Fund.
I'm still a little early on that.
All right.
There's a public hearing notice.
Okay.
Do you want me to read it, or do you want me not to read it?
No, we're a little early.
It's not quite 7 yet, sir. Oh, we are.
Yeah. How about, John? Town manager report.
Okay. Why don't I start out by discussing a very sensitive but yet important subject matter. As we begin to prepare for the FY13 budget, we are faced, before we even get out of the starting box, with some financial issues. We have talked a lot as a board about looking for and trying to get some concessions from healthcare so that we can begin to afford, you know, to provide the basic services that the townspeople expect from municipal government. We have been successful in some cases, and we have been, for lack of a better term, stone walls in other aspects. We are looking at a proposed increase in FY13 alone of approximately $268,580 over last year's appropriation, just in new pension costs for Plymouth County for FY13. That is a 25.27% increase in a fixed cost to the town that we are going to have to absorb. The actual increase for Plymouth County, on average, is 23.1%. What is driving the 25.27% increase just for Abington alone is something that, I think, is open for debate. I will tell you that I think some of those cost increases, those drivers, have to do with some of our collective bargaining agreements. We have, for a very long time, in the police contract, a 7%, increase in the last three years, or three years of a person's wages. They were station operators. We were able to successfully negotiate that out of the police contract in exchange for a number of different concessions, one of which was a 60/40 split in healthcare. We were unable, at least at this point, to secure that same kind of concession from the fire union. The fire union also has a 5/5/5 in its collective bargaining agreement, and those types of spite increases only serve to drive up our percentage cost. And as you can see, the overall increase is 23.1%, but the town of Abington and some other communities, the increase is as high as 29 and 32% of payroll. In our case, it's 25.27%. There are many communities below 20, and the average is 23.1%. So, some communities are doing better, other communities are not. In our case, I think that we are slightly above for a variety of different reasons, extending beyond what I have explained. But this is a fixed cost that we are going to have to meet in the FY13 budget. We have an 18-- excuse me. An 18 million dollar, 19.115183 million-dollar unfunded pension liability cost. Now, we, as you know, last year, when I came here, we set up an account that will allow us to take money and put it into that account to begin to defray some of those costs. We have a 25-year window of opportunity to do that. Each year that we don't means that we have to set aside even more in future years. If these last four years are any indication of what the next four years are going to be without significant concessions in healthcare in particular, and I mean significant beyond where we currently stand. And the reason why I say that is that we have the ability, based on the legislature's latest round of changes to healthcare, we can implement plan, design changes without having to negotiate with every union. That's going to help. But what that does is it takes the increases and it controls them. It modifies the increase. It actually results in savings in the town of anywhere from $2,000,000 to $700,000 to $800,000. All of that is important for us in FY13 if we're going to meet some of these, what I said, structural deficits, increases in fixed costs that we can't possibly meet based on proposition to and out alone. So, as we look to the future, I think that we have a very dismal outlook in relationship to controlling fixed costs. We can control healthcare, so we get healthcare under control and our pension costs continue to skyrocket. Last year, our pension cost increases were manageable. They were reasonable. This year, perhaps as a result of the stock market, maybe a host of other related or unrelated issues to, you know, the pension investment process in Plymouth County, we now find ourselves at a point where we have to increase our costs by 25.27%. Those types of sustained increases over time are, in my opinion, what result in increases in taxes, reductions in services, and our inability to meet the basic fundamental needs of our residents as it relates to providing programs and services. Without significant concessions, both in plan, design, and in percentage split between the town and the employee, we are going to find ourselves being able to meet our increases, but we are not going to be able to significantly restore our programs and services. We are in the service delivery industry. We provide services. We are labor-intensive in how we provide those services. We need people in order to provide those services. We have-- We have not yet automated our, our various departments where you can come, pick a number and get a service. We have to provide for salary and we have to provide for expenses in how we deliver those services. So what I'm saying to you is that as we approach FY13, this pension increase projected for FY13, now that's just 13. If we look at FY14, we're going from 1,938,777 dollars to over 2,017,909 in FY14. And a potential increase, depending upon what we do, what the stock market, how the stock market prevails, of an even greater increase than the 2,017,000. So what I'm saying is that there's, for these next couple of years, because of what's happening on Wall Street and the investment portfolio of Plymouth County, it looks like our fixed costs for pensions are gonna continue to up there. So I'm not gonna point the finger as to who's at fault, who's to blame. I'm gonna provide you with my, my best guess rational approach as to how we can compensate for some of these increases. These are fixed costs, they're employee-related. The employer, employee relationship in the town of Abington has to come to a realization that in order for us to continue to provide health benefits, pension benefits, and meet our fixed cost obligations, we're gonna need to do two things. We're gonna need to control those costs in future years. We have the tool to do that, it's called plan design. In order for us to be able to cut our costs and then be, and then to reallocate those costs to provide programs and services and enhance how we deliver those programs and services, we are gonna need to look at a different percentage split in healthcare. So that's where we stand with pensions. I, I kinda summed this song before, but I'm singing it again and it's going to get worse, it's not gonna get better.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Any questions for John?
Yeah, just, I think you mentioned that we have, the town has a 19 million dollar...
19 million.
Million. And we have some...
Unfunded liability, 19 million...
In pensions?
$115,000 in pennies.
And as I understand it, the last I knew, we had over $40 million unfunded liability in healthcare.
That's correct.
Okay. There's just a couple of things I'd like to, I don't think you brought forth the idea that the, the last three years, I, I don't, I can't fathom why the legislature hasn't, they've done supposedly meaningful changes to the pension program. I don't know if the public is aware that the pension program that you are referring to is based on the last three years, the highest paid three years. That's what your pension is based on, 80% of the highest paid three years. You'd like to make a little comparison to Social Security, and quite frankly, I don't know why we don't have one system for everybody, because you are making, you know, you're making a real divide here, which you've done. And as I understand it, that pension program is based on 8.5% return. As I read it on, on the, on the Peric, I think it is thing, it's 8.5% return. Now, that's fine. I have a 401K. It took a big hit, just like everybody else it is on private industry. Not only am I taking a big hit on that, I have to pick up the mess and fund somebody else's pension. It really doesn't seem fair. So I don't know, I mean, maybe I misled on some of these things. I, I know that they're, like you said, what happens in some towns is they take certain employees, and I, let me just say this too, the rank and file is fine. It's always, it's always a selected few that are chosen, that, that can get there, and all of a sudden you'll get a 10, 10, and 10 in the last three years, so you increase your, your salary, and, and you artificially inflate your pension program and there's no money to pay for it. So it comes out of the back of the rank and file and all the towns in the end ultimately, because we have to pick up the pace. I, I don't know how we can go. I, I look at the, the number of large businesses that have gone forward that have just eliminated pensions, because they couldn't do it, they couldn't, they couldn't do it. It seems like these municipal pensions are the only thing that's gone wild. I think Plymouth County does a good job with their pensions. I, I think there's other counties in here that, that are not bad, and especially the state, if you ever really, you know, really want to get angry and see some of the things that go on. But I, I don't know, I, I just think it's a sad state of affairs, the way it's going, and, and that, that's just my comment. But I, I wanted to be sure that the public knows that that, that your pension, you do pay into it, okay, but when you're going out the door, sometimes you haven't paid nearly enough because they inflate your last three years, and that's what your pension's based on, and I, I just want to say that.
Let me just say a couple of things about the pension reform, because I think pension reform is, is working. And people look at pensions and they say, well, you know, Billy Bulger and all the rest of them, they really enjoyed their, the high life, they've got a pension and all of that's calculated, and that's what people associate pensions with. And that, I think, to some degree, is not representative of the pension system as a whole. Social Security, we are a community, if we decided, we, we can't pay into Social Security, so we don't get Social Security. We only get our pension. And if generous or lack thereof, it's what you pay into it. You know, my, my predicament, in my situation, I'm paying 9%. I started working back, back in 1980, and, you know, I was 7% plus 2. There's not a lot of 5%ers left, they're pretty much either in Florida or on the way. So for pension reform, it's something that was put into place and has gradually been tweaked over the years. People today that are employed in municipal government are paying 11% plus 2% after 30, after 30,000, or paying 13% of their base salary into the pension, into the system. This is a contributory pension system. You put into it what you get out of it to some degree. Now, I have worked since 1980 in government. My, my, the amount of money that I have contributed over those years is approaching maybe 200, 210,000 dollars. But that's over, you know, a 30-year period. I'm assuming that they're investing in a way that allows that amount of money to grow to cover my costs at the, at the end. But I'm, I'm a nine, I'm a 9%er. There are, the system, the pension system requires somebody to put in between 10 and 11% in order for them to be able to take out what they have put in, so there's a neutral playing field. You're, you're putting in extra dollars and over the, the time that you are alive and retired, you're gonna take out that amount, that's the break-even point. So there are some people that are paying more than that, because there's an anticipation that over time those costs are gonna continue to increase. There are many who, who are not. And as you know, the reason why we are in the predicament of rain is because state government over the years never acted soon enough or funded sooner those pensions at the state level. So we're, you know, we're, the state's paying for it and we are paying for it at the local level. So I don't want anyone to walk away with the impression that this is a system that is not self-sustaining. It is. It requires an infusion of money in order for it to be self-sustaining, and we have to pay our share. Now, this share of 268,580, that's an exorbitant amount, and there are reasons for that. The people who, and we've, we've had people retire who in their last three years have had 10, 10, and 10, that's a 30% increase. The system will never capture that 30% over, over 30 years in the last three years. So that's why this number of 25.27% is higher than some of the other averages, because we have people that we have signed contracts with and we have collective bargaining agreements that allow for this. And, and those are things that we as a community have to work on and be cognizant of and try to change over time. It's gonna be very difficult for us to do that, but it is a goal and a requirement, I think, in the process to maintain financial viability.
Also, John, just, just to touch on what you said, a, a large part of this unfunded liability is simply making up the difference to get to the 8.5%. You know, this whole system is, is set up to work on an 8.5% return on their investments. If, if the systems, if, if the investments are only yielding 3%, you know, that 5.5% has to be made up through the, you know, by the taxpayer. That's the unfunded liability.
I think, Mr. Chairman, I think that's my point. It's 8.5% a realistic number. I know it's, I know it goes on in the average of the stock market and stuff like this, but it just, I, I think it's, you know, again, I think the legislature, they easily could have taken the three years and made it five. There's a lot of things they could have done, they could have capped the pension. You know, you speak, I, I think the general public, like we had a police officer in Brockton that took all his sick days and went down to Plymouth County, got a job there, and he worked for the Brockton Police Department and the Sheriff's Department by his vacation and sick days, and he collected two pensions, which I think was somewhere in the vicinity of over $200,000. Now, that, to me, takes out on the rank and file people, that, that's an exorbitant, you know, amount of money, but that, when you try to make up the difference, it falls not just on the taxpayer, it falls on other people in the pension program. So I, I just want to say that. Fine.
All right. Anything else?
I would, I would just say that that's the exception.
Oh, yeah, I agree, but it happens.
And in a, in a pension system that's generating billions of dollars, that's not a lot of money. It may sound a lot to us here in this room, because, you know, having a $200,000 pension, if that's the case, is an exorbitant amount of money, but the pension system is designed to, to take those peaks and valleys, so to speak, and blend them together and come up with a, an average percentage.
Anything else?
Just, I think the big, the bigger issue is the 19.1 million. And what'd you say, over 20 years we have to make that up, 25 years?
The, well, it depends upon how they, if they vote to extend that. Right now, they haven't.
So what is it at now, 25?
I think it's, maybe 25 or 30, I don't know, Kevin would know better than I.
Pardon me, it's right now, it's at 2028. There's a question of extending it out to 2030, even though the legislature has allowed it to go to 2040. But in the, I, I just very briefly, because I don't want to belabor this point, I think the issue, terms of the 8.5%, that's an actuarial basis based over time. You go back and you look at the actuarial studies from going back to 1957, and every 30 years it swings and it levels off at the 8.5%. So when they're funding it, it's not on a yearly basis, it's based over roughly a 30-year period. And I think that's the, the basis that they use, it's, it's driven by the actuarial studies and, and the Government Accounting Standards Bureau, which, which dictates what the procedures will be. And, and I think the issues that have been brought up are the anomaly where you had, certain people have gouged the system, but the average pension is, you know, down in the minuscule level, believe it or not. So I, I think, you know, the, when we see these numbers, obviously, it's a result of, you know, the problems in the stock market, but also the, the, over a period of time, you, you look at your workforce and your ages, people are living longer. So actuarially, you have to provide for that, and as a result of that, that then comes in your unfunded liability. But I think we could have a whole meeting and just talk about this pension system.
Well, we could, we could talk about this forever.
Yeah, and I don't want to talk about it forever, I just want, I think we need to all be aware that this unfunded liability has to start being met at some point, or otherwise we're gonna be in very, very deep trouble, you know, 15 years down the road and we're gonna make it up in five years, then we're really sunk.
The tipping scale is, do we stay at 2028 and, and pay these larger amounts now, or do we extend it five years, eight years, 10 years? We can go to, we can go to 2040 legislatively, legislation's allowed us to do that. Right now, we're at 2028. I think that we need to look at that in the context of the 268,580 in FY13 and a projected increase of an additional couple of hundred thousand in FY14. And is that a better course of action now, or should we extend it to, you know, 2030, 2032? I don't know what the answer is, and that's, that's not our decision to make, that's gonna be the Plymouth County level, as to whether or not they're gonna extend it out. There is a meeting tomorrow at 9 o'clock, which I will be attending.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, we're gonna move on. All right, 7 o'clock. A public hearing will be held by the Board of Selectmen on Monday, November 28, 2011, at 7:00 PM to discuss the town's proposed grant application to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development for funding from its FY12 Community Development Fund program. I'm interested in motion, open the hearing.
Sure, move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, okay, the hearing's open. John, could you elaborate on this grant?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, before you tonight, I have also given you, and I think, before I go any further, I'd like to, to introduce Wayne Darrow, who is the consultant that the town has hired to get our grant application. This is a regional grant application that will include the towns of Whitman and the town of Abington. The grant application is designed to establish a target area for the town that will allow us to concentrate our resources in a variety of different initiatives, should we decide to go in that direction. From housing rehab to bricks and mortar, to commercial rehab, if we so desire. But tonight, it's a meeting with the board and Wayne to go over the projected proposals that we have before you. I've given you a map of the proposed target area that we have thought might be helpful. You can, the information that was handed out by Wayne talks about some of the different strategies for our community development block grants that have been funded in the past, as well as where we stand presently with our application. I can turn it over to Wayne so that he could give you more detailed information than I could ever possibly imagine.
Thank you, John. Wayne Darrow, Community Opportunities Group, we're a community and economic development consulting firm. We help a lot of communities in Massachusetts and Connecticut access community development block grant funds and then help them manage the programs and projects that get funded. John and I go way back, we, my firm has worked with John when he has held comparable positions in other communities, so John asked me to have a look at Abington and see if I thought Abington could be competitive in the community development block grant program. And I do. The Community Development Block Grant Program, or CDVG program, is a very flexible program. The funding there can be used for all sorts of different activities. It can be used for actual brick and mortar, construction of public facilities, it can be used for infrastructure, it can be used for handicap accessibility improvements, it can be used for planning or design, it can be used for social services, it can be used for housing projects, and it can be used for commercial rehabilitation projects also. There's a, quite a long list of what types of projects are eligible under CDVG. There are other criteria that need to be met also, though. One of those is, an activity has to meet a national objective. There are three national objectives under the enabling legislation. One is to provide assistance to low-marted income households or individuals. The other is to prevent or eliminate slums and blight, and the third is urgent need. That would be a Hurricane Katrina-type of situation, it's not something that you normally see, but most CDVG activities are targeted towards assisting low-marted income individuals. At the federal level, they have to spend 70% of their money on those types of activities. The rest can be spent on meeting the other national objectives. In Massachusetts, they have a very competitive CDVG process. In Massachusetts, they have a very competitive CDVG process. They have an application that's due on December 16th, needs to be submitted online. It is a relatively complex document, but DHCD has seen fit, DHCD is the Department of Housing and Community Development in Massachusetts, they have seen fit to separate the communities in the Commonwealth into two different pools of eligibility. DHCD has created something called Communitywide Need Score. It's a ranking of each and every community in the Commonwealth on a score from 0 to 35, and it indicates the level of need in that community. They've then decided to classify communities as CDF-1 communities or CDF-2 communities, where CDF-1 communities are the more needy communities. If you have a score of 27 out of 35 or higher, you are a CDF-1 community. You will be competing against other CDF-1 communities. Your need score is part of your application score, and there is a bigger pool of funding available for CDF-1 communities. Also, CDF-1 communities are eligible to compete every year. If you have a need score of 24 or lower out of 35, you're a CDF-2 community. There's a smaller pool of funding available. Your need score is not part of your application score, and if you are funded, you need to sit out the following year's funding round. If you're a community that has a need score of 25 or 26, you have an option. You get to make a decision if you want to compete in the CDF-1 pool or the CDF-2 pool. Town of Abington has a need score of 26, so you have a choice that needs to be made. It has been my recommendation to John that Abington submit as a CDF-2 community. And I say that because in the CDF-1 pool, Abington with a need score of 26 would be competing against communities with need scores of 30, 31, 29. You're already five or three points behind the eight ball before your application even starts to get scored. In the last three years, I've only seen one community with a need score of 26 that got funded in the CDF round, CDF-1 round. So, it was my recommendation to go in as a CDF-2. Whitman also has a need score of 26, so they also have the option to make a choice. So, my proposal to John was to submit a regional application in the CDF-2 pool. There's only about $2.5 million available in the CDF-2 pool. That'll probably fund three to four applications. They'll probably receive eight to 10, so it's going to be very competitive. In order to make the application more competitive, that was why I suggested a regional application, because the town will get two bonus points for doing a regional application. Those two bonus points can make all the difference in the world. It's been a while since Abington has submitted an application. I think 2004 was the last year that the town submitted a CDVG application. The proposal that we're putting forward tonight is for a joint housing rehab program. The housing rehab program is a program that allows you to provide assistance to properties that are occupied by low-income individuals, to bring those properties up to code. The assistance is basically what we call a deferred payment loan. As an example, if you had a single-family home that was income-qualified to participate in the program, and it was $15,000 worth of work to bring that property up to code, what we would do is place a 15-year, $15,000, zero-interest lien against that property. And that's a declining balance lien. So, every year that passes, 1/15th, so goes down to $14,000 and 13, eventually going to zero, if that homeowner does not sell that property. They remain in residence there and retain ownership, then basically, that loan is forgiven. If during that 15-year period, there is a sale of the property, then that money, depending on where you are in the declining balance schedule, would be paid back to the town. That money could then be turned around and put back out on the street for another housing rehab program. We're proposing to do a 20-unit program that would be split equally between Abington and Whitman. I know that doesn't sound like Big Bang for your buck, but I actually anticipate we'll do more than 10 units with the amount of money that we're going to request. Chances are, we'll have a number of emergency requests for people who have smaller projects that are very, very important to get done quickly, perhaps a failed heating system or a roof that's leaking very badly and causing damage to the interior of the home. But, proposals to go for a 20-unit joint housing rehab program. The other activity that we've been talking about is to provide some assistance to the Abington Senior Center and Council on Aging, to provide additional services that they cannot provide right now. We're still fine-tuning exactly how we're going to provide that additional outreach and what form that service may take. The limit with social services is you can get up to 15% of your total grant funded for social services. I expect that this grant application is going to total $800,000. And we're probably looking at approximately $600,000 for housing rehab, maybe $80,000 for the Council on Aging activity, and then the rest would be administrative. Any questions about the grant program or application process?
Maybe one more time, if you could just repeat how someone would fill out an application and apply.
Well, right now, we have a housing need survey on the town's website. I would ask that folks go there and download that form and sign it out and mail it in. It'll give us an idea of the types of work that properties in Abington might need. Once we have, if we receive funding, what we will do is set up a lottery for applicants. We'll have a two-week time period during which individuals can submit their application. We'll then do a simple lottery, and that will establish a waiting list for processing requests for assistance, and then we'll begin to walk through that. If you take the time to download the housing need survey and send it in, we may actually take the opportunity to come out and do a quick review of your property right now and see what its needs are, and use that as an example of the type of need that could exist in Abington. Now, I'm sorry.
If somebody was successful in getting one of these grants, how does the town keep control over the funds and who's getting paid and that sort of thing?
Okay. Because these are federal funds, there needs to be a fair and equitable bid process. At the end of the day, the contract is going to be between the homeowner and the contractor for this work. So, it's not a town contract, per se, but we will handle it like a closed bid, a sealed bid process. What happens is, my housing rehab, or a housing rehab specialist would visit the property, develop a set of specifications with the homeowner. The program, at its launch, would begin to build a pool of qualified, properly licensed, properly insured, general contractors who can bid on these projects. The housing rehab specialists would then have a mandatory walkthrough, so any contractor who's interested in bidding on this project will not get the specs unless he shows up at the property for a walkthrough with the housing rehab specialist. We don't want estimators sitting behind a desk someplace throwing numbers at these projects. We want people to actually walk through and have the chance to see exactly what's required of them. We then typically give seven to 14 days, depending on the complexity of the project, for contractors to put their bids together. They would submit it, we would have a witnessed bid opening, and the project would go to the low bidder. If a homeowner wanted to use someone other than the low bidder, they have that option, but they would have to pay the differential between the low bid and the bid they want to use.
Do you generally get a fair amount of bidders that take part in these?
Typically, when we launch a program, we'll do quite a bit of marketing. We try to interest as many local contractors as we can. We'll post notices at the Building Inspector's Department. We'll run ads in the newspaper. We'll try and get as much interest as we can. Typically, the first few bids, there's quite a few people participating, and then some folks start self-selecting out because they realize they're just not going to be able to do the work for what the bids are coming in at. But, it's not unusual for us to have anywhere from five to seven contractors appear at a walkthrough and submit bids.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Kenny?
A couple of questions. Are you meeting with Whitman also about that?
Yes.
You are?
Yes, I met with their board on the 22nd, and I'll be going back before them on the 13th.
Okay, and I see this map that we received. Now, are these two areas that are highlighted, are those the only areas that would be eligible for these improvements?
Starting about three years ago, DHCD required that communities target their CDVG programs, which was a very difficult decision for a lot of communities to make, because they did not want to keep folks from the entire town from participating. So, what we typically do, and we are allowed to do this by DHCD, is we will set aside 20% of the received housing rehab monies for emergencies outside of those target areas. So, while we wouldn't be able to do what we would refer to as a full case, where you address every code issue, if you did have a failed furnace, a leaking roof, the need for some handicap accessibility improvements, you would have the resources to be able to do that, limited scope of work on properties outside of those two target areas.
I think it's important that the people on TV know what the map is and the areas that we're talking about. Maybe we can put this up on the website also, along with the form that we're just talking about doing. You don't want people to go to all the trouble and get their hopes up and then realize that you're not in that area.
They may not be eligible.
Yeah, it's generally the southwest corner of town and the northeast corner of town.
I think it's the ones with the most housing, so, I mean, that's a good thing.
It's the older housing stocks in town, and it's an area that's closely densely populated, smaller homes.
Right, and Kevin's house.
And for us.
Yeah, my streets in that neighborhood. It's basically the Green Street neighborhood and that corner of town, and then up in North Abington.
And Mustafield.
Mustafield. All right.
What's your success rate as far as putting these applications through and actually obtaining funds for a town?
My firm has a really good success rate. Over the last 10 years, over 90% of our applications have been funded. And we did six last year, and five were funded.
That's good.
So...
Do we need to vote approval, or do women already vote on it, or how's that work?
I would love to walk out of here tonight with that vote, but I'm not sure you're ready to make it until I have a little more information, and we have hammered out exactly what the Council on Aging activity might be. But I think, you know, when we do get there, I'll be looking for authorization to submit a grant application for up to two activities, up to $800,000.
And this has to be done by the 16th of December?
December 16th, yep. And I don't know what your schedule is for December.
We do have a meeting.
12th. The 12th, so I would expect to be here on the 12th to get that.
Aren't you, when you meeting with Whitman?
The 13th. Any more questions about the application itself? Okay, the other thing we need to take up tonight is the community development strategy. Again, the last time Abington had a community development strategy was 2004. The requirements for the community development strategy have changed significantly since then, especially the part about targeting. Back in 2004, targeting was not required, it was optional. You got bonus points if you did it. Now, it's required, hence the target areas we were talking about. If you were not submitting a CDVG application, you wouldn't have a community development strategy. It's sort of a contrived document at the hands of DHCD. Basically, what they want is a document that says, "We've talked about the needs of the town. We've talked about the areas of town that have greater need. We've talked about what our priorities are, and we've listed them for you." And in order for a project to be considered for CDVG funding, it has to occur in the target areas that you've selected, and it has to be somewhere on your list of priorities. We're working on a draft CDS right now. I suspect I will have something for John to review by the end of the week. Basically, we are looking at the EO418 plan that was prepared for the town by Old Colony Planning Council. It had a pretty good, did a pretty good job of vetting a lot of different issues in four different sort of main categories of areas, community facilities, housing, economic development, and open space recreation. So, we think we, there's enough information there for us to look at the priorities that were listed back then, sort of vet them again with you, but we'll be using that as the basis for our community development strategy.
And will that come back to us on the 12th also?
Yeah, we'll look to adopt that on the 12th also. They say, I hope to have it drafted, John, by the end of the week.
How does the Council on Aging play into this?
Actually, it was the Council on Aging that sort of started this relationship and asked John about looking at some grant funding possibilities. And we've been meeting off and on with David and Suzanne for over a year now. They're looking to leverage additional funding to provide expanded services to their clients. We've talked about a couple of things. We've talked about trying to develop a better outreach program to contact seniors who are shut-ins and determine what their services are and try to better meet them. One of the things that came up, we actually had a CDS meeting at the senior center on, I believe it was the 14th of November, and one of the things that came up at that CDS meeting was a need for elder daycare. So, David and Suzanne have started some research into that with local providers. So, one of the things we've talked about doing is perhaps having a voucher system for families who are their primary caretakers of an elder in their home, and they might have the ability to enter that person in daycare one day a week or on an as-needed basis, and be able to have that fee subsidized with grant funds. We also talked about a potential transportation voucher program. It was another issue that came up at the CDS meeting at the senior center, was the need that some seniors have to get to doctor's appointments that are not served by the current transportation that's available and cannot be served by the van at the senior center. In other communities, we've set up programs where a senior could receive a subsidy for a cab ride that was needed to get to a doctor's appointment, say, in Boston or somewhere else where they did not have a viable transportation alternative. So, this is sort of the three things that have been kind of floating around. We're trying to nail that down as quickly as possible, as to which direction they want to go in.
Thank you.
And there's one other thing I just need to touch on, and that's the Sustainable Development Principles of Massachusetts. It's another, any activity you have to do has to meet those principles. That's not going to be an issue for this application. It doesn't apply to social services, and housing rehab, by definition, meets it because we're using, we're doing work on existing structures, but it's something we just need to touch on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I expect I'll be back on the 12th with a more exact idea of exactly what's going in, and I'd better have it by then. But we'll be okay. We've got enough time to get this done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, just to make a comment, and I'd like to thank Council on Aging and David and Suzanne for being proactive and going out and contacting the grant writer, it appears, and for, because it's going to be a benefit not only to the seniors, but to other folks in town too, not just the seniors, so.
Totally noted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have an update on Abington CAM. Henry DeCarlo. You know the drill, Henry.
I do know the drill. Henry DeCarlo, 187 Central Street, and I'm the board member and president of Abington. Henry DeCarlo, 187 Central Street, and I'm the board member and president of Abington CAM. That's Abington Community Access and Media Incorporated, a not-for-profit corporation established by the town under federal and state laws. I thought about what I needed to present to you tonight to bring people up to date, both at home and on the board. And I thought maybe just to talk for a second about structure. There are two different organizations in town. There is a Cable Advisory Committee, which is a committee formed for many years by the Board of Selectmen to advise them on cable activities. And this committee was very active during a period of time when the studio was being run by Comcast or their predecessors. And it was very active in the licensing, working on the licensing and working on the negotiations. It was very active in working on the renewal licenses. The, and then there is Abington Community Access and Media Incorporated, Abington CAM, which is the public access corporation established under federal and state laws. And this is a very typical type of organization and I'll sort of tell you how we got to that point. You know, the cable companies in Abington go back many years and we had, it was a Haron Campbell, became Adelphia, became Comcast. They went through different iterations as these were purchased out. And as part of their contract for those many years, they ran the studio. They ran the PEG programming. You know, here the term PEG, Public Educational and Governmental. Three channels, three separate topics, three separate pieces of program. And the public programming is clearly First Amendment. Anybody can produce programming, anybody can put it on. There were some restrictions, but very few. Educational channel is actually part of the school functions in the school department and we'll talk about that in a second. Very, it's been very underused in this town and we need to address that. And then governmental is a very unique situation because governmental programming typically is run gavel to gavel. Programming that's just governmental organizations. And we have one channel set aside both on Comcast and Verizon for each of these functions. Historically, in 2008, the Cable Advisory Group came in front of you and endorsed and this board or your predecessors approved a license for Verizon to come into town. This changed the picture dramatically. And Verizon came into, I think, 65 cities and towns around that time and they've increased their numbers. And this was the first true competition to Comcast or to Comcast as they bought all these other companies. And as part of that license, Verizon has an initial license, they started wiring the town. And I will tell you that I spoke with the Verizon representative last week in preparing for this. And I've been very concerned that there have been segments of town that were not able to receive service yet. And she informed me that they are now available to 97% of the town. Okay, so they are well on their way to meeting that goal. And I was surprised that they had fired up some other, some other lines and they have that available. But they assure me that they are now available 97% of the town. The few percent that are not available are multifamily dwellings and people with underground and a few other things that they're working on. So that was 2008. The board brought Verizon in. In 2009 Comcast, their contract came up for renewal. And we renewed the Comcast contract. This board as the issuing authority renewed the Comcast contract. Part of that contract was, as very typically is happening in cities and towns, that they got out of the studio business. They got out of the PEG business. They got out of running the studios. And that was buried in, hidden in the contract for many years. And they stepped aside from that and they, in that contract, there were specifications that authorized the formation of a public access corporation as an independent corporation. And you can see the logic behind this because Comcast did not want to be producing and paying for programming that was going to be then broadcast on the competitors' channels. So they just stepped aside from that. And it was funding built into both the 2008 Verizon contract and 2009 Comcast contract. To take a small portion of each subscriber's cable only, not their internet or their phone, but their cable only, and dedicate those monies to going into funding the public access corporation. And this only kicked in after Comcast gave up the studio, which was several months after the contract was awarded. Many towns have a long history of public access corporations. I was looking at some legal paperwork today from Cambridge from 1986. East Bridgewater's had one for many, many years. But in our situation, where we only had one provider and it was built into the contract, we didn't get into this until we got to the two providers. Again, it's PEG, it's and there are many, many more towns just like us getting into this business over the last few years because Verizon moved into the, into the territory and into Massachusetts and started providing this service for cities and towns. Generally good for subscribers, you know, having competition is generally good because it's brought, you know, it's brought competition in as far as what their offerings are, what the rates are. Believe me, I subscribe to one of them, the other one sends me mail every two minutes. They're fighting for each other's customers, back and forth. So I think when there's competition, that's a good thing. I think the board saw it that way and the town saw it that way for many years. So Abington CAM was established by the board, established in 2009, we're just a little over two years old now, as a separate public access corporation, an independent corporation. We are not a governmental agency. Again, we're not a governmental agency and this has been legally accepted, you know, was established by the government for a public purpose, but we are a not-for-profit organization. And the funding of this, again, comes from small amounts on individual cable bills and I'll talk about those numbers in a second. There was also a capital amount that was provided by Verizon, starts off. And then Comcast signed over all the existing equipment, all the existing, the studio and all the other equipment that they had in town for a dollar. So that provided the startup for the organization. There was a transition period of 90 days. And then in December of 2009, we took over the studio operations. So we're just coming up on two years of running the studio. As you know, we went out and hired Justin Shanahan to run our operations on a day-to-day basis on the studio operations and from Verizon and I don't think anybody's ever had a bad thing to say about Justin. He's been, you know, compliments that he's received from the town over the years. We did that for a very specific reason. He was doing a wonderful job in his role at Comcast and we wanted to maintain that. And we took the position of sort of crawling and walking and running. The funding that was set up was on a percentage basis of people's cable bills. And it was a guesstimate, it was an estimate of what we would need to run and to build up a capital fund to maintain equipment and to eventually maybe go to a new, more mounted studio. The initial funding payments were set up at a less than, in the 4% range, I believe it was 4.8% of individuals' cable bills only. And one of the questions we had was, how much was this new company going to affect the funding that we've been seeing or the numbers we were seeing from Comcast? And where was this going to level out in Abington? And we weren't sure, you know, as Verizon came in, how many customers are switching over and how many not? What I think I've seen over the last two years is that they didn't really pull a huge amount of business from each other because the numbers are showing that the businessmen. But I think what they did was they pulled additional customers and maybe people who had satellite dishes have now gone to them. Now, people with satellite dishes or people that take broadcasts over the air cannot get any of the public channels. So they can't see the football games, the Mighty Mites, the parades, the police chief, the Lions Club or any of this stuff.
Selectmen's meetings, they can't see the Selectmen's.
They can't see any of the governmental channels. They cannot see the governmental channel. There's no way to do that. It only has, it only goes out over the cable providers that you license in town. So that, you know, that is not generally available. Or the town meeting, or the school committee, or South Shore VOTAC, or the other things we put on the government channel. So that, again, this funding is from those people who have the service and it's a small portion of their bill. So, and also, this was front-loaded because we didn't know what our budget was going to be. We didn't know, you know, what was going on. So actually, after two years, that amount decreases from 4.8 to 4.35. And that, I believe, occurred in October. So people will start to see a change, a small change, about a half a percent less on their bill. And the reason it was front-loaded was we want to make sure that the startup costs were covered. Again, estimating, guessing, as we worked with the attorney and saw what happened in other towns, we tried to estimate what would happen with that. We think that we've run very frugal operations. You know, Justin and I have had the conversation many times. It's crawl, then walk, then run. And we just tried to maintain what we had going on and start layering on and adding to it. The, I mentioned the PEG channels and the public channel certainly, you know, involves sports, community activities, the parades, the graduations, the proms, the walks, that type of thing, all the local programming. And anybody in town is invited to come see Justin, get some training, put a program on. Anybody can do programming and we encourage it. We encourage that. The schools, we have actually just been working with the school superintendent and the school committee and the high school principal. And we think that we've got a plan in place to do some small funding for the schools and start some school programming. They're in a stable position right now where I think they can take that on. And what Abington CAM would do would be sponsor a video club at the schools. The high school principal is working on finding an advisor for this and to work in coordination with Justin and to get this going. And we would start that off small, but hopefully that would do a couple of things. Provide some school program in that channel as well as provide us some future volunteers, people to be doing programming around town. I mean, where better to start? And the studio, what we've done, what we've done with the funds up to this point is certainly continued the existing programming. We, you know, we're working on the school sponsorship. At the studio, we had to invest in some office equipment. We had to get the business started up. One of the things that Comcast did not leave were their office computers and things like that. So we had to get equipment in there to do that. We set up a server, a brand-new server system that makes it hugely improved in how we do programming and how we schedule programming. And Justin does not have to be there to change tapes or discs or whatever. It's all done electronically. We put the website up and thanks to Chris, who's our webmaster, we've got the website up and running. We did that. We also, of course, as you recall, funded the initial startup of the town's website. Thanks to Mr. Burbine's suggestion, we, you know, we found a way to do that and got the town's website up and running, the current website for the town. And we've been certainly improving operations at the studio. In the field, we've put, Justin's put out two new field kits out there. He's replaced and upgraded some existing equipment, including some communications equipment. That's an ongoing thing. And those field kits can be used for sports events, for things in a field. They can also be used for meeting recording and meeting rooms. And we felt this was the, one of the best ways to utilize those funds up to that point. The town facilities, and particularly this room and the town building and other town facilities, is something we've been looking at. We've actually had proposals from vendors that have been in or walked through to see what we can do better in the town. It's an interesting point though. Justin pointed out to me the other day that this room, this equipment is here all the time. It's been here, yet it's underutilized. The finance committee records their meetings, school committee records their meetings. We provide recordings as Comcast did for the selectmen and for the town meeting. But there are many other meetings that happen in this room that don't get recorded. So we have equipment that's existing here today that's underutilized. We've been working at what we could do with this building. We actually have had proposals in here and there's some questions about what should Abington CAM do and what should the town be responsible for? If we put the equipment in, if it needs wiring, are we doing the wiring or, you know, electrical? Possibly some different lighting in the room. There was discussion at one point about some large screen TVs, so you can see that. But is that really cable's responsibility or is that the town's responsibility? And we met, Justin and I scheduled a meeting, met with the town manager back in the beginning of the summer to discuss some of these issues. We set up at that point a, or tentatively set up a follow-up and we were going to meet with the technology person from the schools. And I believe it was the town accountant at that point that was also involved in some plans for technology here. We had made a decision, or we thought was a decision, not to wait for the new technology person to come on board because we didn't want to wait on it. But there was no follow-up meeting held that, no follow-up was done on that. We've actually had a couple of proposals and a couple of bids for what we could do with the building. I can tell you that it's going to be relatively simple to do the two conference rooms up here. It's going to be much more difficult to get equipment downstairs. There's also requests from the police chief that he might want to do some broadcasting there. We've looked at the possibility of doing something from the Senior Center. So we're looking at other town facilities. And one of the things that's working very much in our favor is that prices are coming down. That equipment is becoming more technical, more technically competent, less expensive. And I think every time Justin goes to a show, he sees a new, greater, better, bigger, smaller, faster, cheaper, you know, whatever it might be. So it's working to our advantage there that we can be doing some of these things. And as far as the future goes, one of the things we would very much like to do, and we've had discussions with school committee members and with the superintendent, is to have a facility conjunction with a school building, high school or middle school, where it has access to the public studio and access to the school to be used as a teaching and school facility. Many towns have done this and this would be ideal. Essentially, CAM would be paying rent to the town for that facility. Right now, our facility will serve us well for the future and we could stay there. But it's not where we want to be. It's not long-term what we want to do. So we'd like to do that going forward. We are putting aside a significant part of those funds for capital improvements. For capital improvements in equipment, for capital improvements in wiring buildings and getting equipment into buildings for capital improvements in hopefully, a new, modern, up-to-date studio with all the bells and whistles, I guess you'd call it, you know. So that if we're doing training of people, we're training them on the current equipment and not the last generation or the generation before that. So that's a quick rundown of what we are doing. We do have our books out at the accountant and the auditor. We will be providing a report to the town, but I can tell you that when I get a request for audited figures and things like that, that is not the role of the town. That is not the relationship between the town and a public access corporation. And we will be providing a report on our operations and our finances, but a report just because of our affiliation with the town, not that we report to the town. And I'm very protective of this because if we go beyond these things, we are jeopardizing our independent status and we don't want to do that. So that's my rundown. I'm certainly open to questions and comments. I know there's been some concern about not getting things upgraded in this room. And hopefully with a new technology person on board, maybe we can make some progress on that now. Oh, and I also want to compliment Dory Jamison. We've had a thing pending for quite a while. It's a revision to the Verizon contract, a minor revision. And I know Dory took point on that a few weeks ago and it's finally moving, so I want to compliment her and thank her for that. That's where I am.
Does anybody have any questions for Henry?
Henry, thank you for coming, by the way. You do a lot for the town. I appreciate that. A lot of questions I had, not just for myself, but people like that. And now, we had a Cable Advisory Committee. Are they defunct now or that?
I believe they're still in position, although I'm not sure how many people are actively on anymore. It's certainly there. It's something that you would need to reactivate if you come up to renewal or if a third vendor comes into town or something like that. There's not a huge role for them in this structure that you have right now for day-to-day. And they used to work day-to-day with the cable company that was monitoring the studio, you know, again, they certainly do have a role and as your board does as the licensing authority.
Who appoints the officers of this corporation or how do they get to be an officer?
The initial board was appointed by this, your board, Cable Advisory and the school committee, our school superintendent. Beyond that, it becomes a self-maintaining board. And we're actually working with the attorneys on getting an approved set of bylaws for the elections. But the idea would be that the majority of these people are not appointed by the town. In some towns, none of them are, and some towns there are one or two appointed by the town. But the idea is that it, you have to keep it arms-length and not make it a town agency. And that is to maintain the federal and state standards for a cable access corporation. It has to be at arms-length. So there is a reporting back to the town. I think the most similar situation we might have in Abington is the housing authority. is the housing authority, you know, where they're an independent authority, but they have a relationship with the town. So I think it's, it's not an exact match, but it's a similar match.
Yeah, okay. No, that's fine. And I certainly did have the questions that you answered about doing some changes here. As far as, I mean, there was a lot of things thrown out there. If we do get the cameras in each room, whether we could do a senior rebate program, or, as you mentioned, the kids or something like that, where we might be able to, you know, bring that along. Because I agree with you. I look at some of the other channels that are on our website, Mass Shield and all, and stuff like that. And they do a lot more in the schools than what we're doing right now. But...
Unfortunately, neither your board or our group has a lot of impact on what can happen in the schools without the schools being partners on it.
True.
And I think we found a way to start funding a little bit of a mechanism to get that to happen. And this is just recently, in the last month or so, that we've been working on this. And the idea was brought to me, and I took it and ran with it, you know, to fund a club.
Even though I agree with you in saying it should be at arms-length, at some point in time, like tonight was very helpful to me and the board, and I think a lot of people had questions. And you say the relationship, is it fair to ask, you know, your board, your committee, do you have open meetings, you know, where it is the town's money, where people might go in and have an interest or suggestion or something like that? Does that happen? Or, I'm a little bit confused when you say that this is arms-length.
Actually, Mike, if I can correct you there, it's really not the town's money. It's money contributed from the subscribers of cable directly to the cable access corporation. The money doesn't flow through the town. The town did establish the initial rate in the contract and the rates. And they are going to decrease again in three more years. You know, the percentage goes down. The hope is, obviously, that more subscribers, more people buying cable, so that the funding will stay stable or maybe drop a little bit.
The only reason I said that, Henry, is because it was a big to-do about the 300 when they were collecting money on behalf of the town. And basically, you know, I say it is not town's money, it's cable and something like that, but it's more or less on the behalf of the town. But I mean, the point I'm trying to make, I agree with you that it's like, I know what you're saying there, but is there some kind of reporting that the town should be able to, you know, have, to work together with you guys?
Well, the licensing says that we should provide a report to the licensing authority, which is the Board of Selectmen, at honor approximately, at the, honor around the end of each fiscal year, as to operations and finances, or operations and budgets, but as an advisory report only, okay? So we, you know, the theory is that no governmental agency should be controlling the programming, with the exception of the government channel. The government channel, the way the license is written and the way the law is written is, you can ask for programming to be broadcast, not broadcast. We don't totally control that. In practical ways, most towns delegate that, because they're not going to worry, are you playing the selectmen's meeting at 10 o'clock instead of 11 or something like that, you know? So most towns do delegate that. But in a recent situation, when the school department asked us to pull a program, we were able to pull a program, you know? And we could not do that on the public channel. Public channel is under different rules of, you know, free speech and First Amendment and, you know, First Amendment, we love it and we hate it at the same time, you know? Thank you.
And just to Mike's point, as far as a nonprofit goes, anybody who is a subscriber can become a member. And pay a fee, I think it was, we haven't quite established that fee, but to become a member of the corporation, they have to hold an annual meeting, the corporation does. Members would get notice of that meeting and that sort of thing.
Yeah, okay, fine. I mean, that was just, it seemed like whatever happened, just like the cable, it just seemed, they asked questions. Nobody was quite sure what the organization was, how it operated. But you explained that beautifully tonight. Thank you.
And we did have, you know, we did have meetings here. Probably nobody watched them on cable. No. With this board, you know, we did full report. Your attorney, the attorney for the board, who specializes in cable, Bill August, you know, worked with it, used a model that we used in many other towns. We've had very good support from him. And he's very knowledgeable in this area.
Go ahead, Kenny.
Now, how many members on the board are directors? Five?
There are five.
Is, I'm looking at the 2009 annual report. It says two of them were appointed by the selectmen. Are they still a member?
Yes.
How often do you guys meet?
Well, we had, we've just recently met. We have not been having a lot of active meetings, but we, because of some things that we have to do to line up some of the paperwork, we're meeting again in December. And we'll have at least for the current, some regular meetings, and we'll probably spread them out again. But there's some paperwork.
2010, I think we met two or three times.
Yeah.
Now, 4.8%. I know my cable bill is kind of crazy. Like, how much does that approximately total to through the whole town? Do you have any estimates of?
Well, the numbers are changing almost every payment, okay? Verizon has been going up significantly as they add subscribers. And they started out very small and then have been going up. Comcast has been going up a small amount, you know? So we're currently now probably, if the rates keep going up, looking at $240,000, $250,000 a year, something like that. And, you know, it's amazing how much, I thought we'd see the numbers decrease as it went down. And we'll have, we have the accountant looking at this to get, line us up with some numbers.
Now, besides Justin, are there any other paid employees for the Abington CAM?
Justin and Chris Prow, who is also our webmaster and does some recording for us, and two part-time employees, you know? We make the payroll through a small contract. We have ADP. So all the taxes and everything, and all the insurance is covered that way. We have all the necessary insurance requirements. But the only thing that we haven't done is we didn't put the vehicle back on the road, because there was a very limited need for that. That's still an option for us to do that at this point, but...
Right. Now, you're not a government agency, so do you still have, like, post your meetings, have public meetings, or are they basically board directors in a, locked in a room?
The standard is, and the draft of the rules that we're planning to adopt, is that we need to publicize it on the cable channel, because the meeting is open to subscribers. So that, they would all see it that way. We meet, we essentially meet the spirit of public meeting laws without having to meet the rules of them. So we don't have to worry necessarily about 48 hours and is it in an outdoor, you know, bulletin board and some of these things. But we try to meet the spirit of that. And, you know, there are rules for corporations generally that we need to follow.
But still, are you still working on the rules, though? You're not quite finalized yet?
We're planning to adopt a set of bylaw, a final set of bylaws. We're working on those right now.
Even though you're not a town agency yet, I think it'd be great if maybe it could be at least one person from a board selectman or something, an appointment, just to be on the board of trustees and be voted by.
Well, Mr. Burbine is a member.
I'm with you 100% on that.
And Tom Corbett.
No, but I mean going forward.
Going forward, as well as...
Because he's running for reelection next.
No, no.
You never know what's going to happen.
Currently, that is, you know, that is a suggestion that we have in the draft, and certainly that is something we're looking at.
I think that'd be great.
Going forward. You know, we certainly don't want to be in opposition, but at the same time, we do need to maintain our role with, you know, with the town. And, you know, and maintain the, you know, the idea that these were set up as organizations who would not compromise on, particularly on the public channel, the freedom of, you know, people to put programming on the channel. And we would love to see more volunteers. We'd love to see more programming. There is a practical matter. And that is, you have some weeks, if you had a rule that every board and committee and whatever needed to be broadcast, I mean, you're talking 30, 40 hours of meeting time a week in some situations. And it does take our staff, and they have to take these tapes or these discs or whichever format they come in, process them. There's a, we put a strip on there that says Abington, because if you happen to be on Verizon, you can see a bunch of different towns up and down. So we try to show the date, the time, you know, when the meeting was held, and have that information up on there. So there is processing time. And then there's also a question of how often can we play a meeting if we're playing 20, 30 meetings a week? You know, you might have to wait three days to see the selectmen again. And I know everybody wants to see them more often.
But can I, can I ask you a question, like, in specifics? Now, say I did something stupid at the meetings, which, you know, may happen at one point, and the board feels, feels that it embarrassed the board. Could the board, a board member or the board say, can you please not show that video?
The, and this is...
On the government channel?
Yeah. Generally, the licensing authority, the town, has the ability to control what goes or does not go on the government channel. So a meeting could be pulled, can be pulled, and we actually have some experience with that, and not broadcast on the government channel. The other thing is that many of our meetings, as you know, are videoed by the board. And if they don't bicycle them over to us, if they don't bring them over to us, then, you know, they can be held at that point. I would, you know, mention that South Shore Voc Tech is a good example. They record their meetings now. They have student, I believe, recording, whoever is doing it. They then bring it to the various towns, you know? And we choose to play it, and we put it up on the government channel, because I think it's important for people to see what's going on with that portion of their town government and their town funds. And that is an official government meeting.
So we could edit some of these. So when John goes on too long, we could have Chris edit it?
No, no, you have to, on government channel, you have to show them gavel to gavel. That's not allowed.
If, if you show it at all?
If you show, yes.
Okay.
But if they're shown, they have to be, they have to be gavel to gavel public meetings. And that was, going back some number of years ago, in town, there were some questions about that, and there were legal opinions gathered from town.
Thank you. Any other questions? Very inquisitive tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Henry. That was a great presentation. That shed a lot of light on a lot of different subjects. We appreciate you coming. Thank you.
I was going to say, when I see something too.
All right.
When I do.
Without further ado, we have an audit presentation by our auditing firm, Powers &amp; Sullivan.
Uh-oh, there's two of them. This can't be good.
Hi. Thank you for seeing us tonight. I'm Jim Powers, Powers &amp; Sullivan, and I'm the engagement partner on the town. What that means is I review everything back at the office, make sure everything's in accordance with our own technical standards. And with me is another one of our partners.
Craig Peacock. I am what we call the onsite partner, so I'm out in the field quite often with our team, actually assisting in conducting of the audit and dealing with all of town management and the various department heads.
Tonight, it may seem like I was just here a little while ago, and I was. I believe it was a summit sometime or whatever. Last year's report was late, and we explained why that was last year. This is the normal process. When we left that meeting last time, I said we need to schedule this in the fall, which it was done. The audit is complete. And what we're going to do is kind of do an overview of the audit reports that you do have. One of the things I probably won't go into that much is the town manager did a great job earlier, talking about some of the things that we're looking at as concerns, the fixed cost and the go-forward basis and the, the trouble people are getting to balance their budgets with pension costs and health insurance costs, et cetera, as you go through, OPEB liabilities, those type of things. And what I heard in the discussion earlier, I agreed with pretty much everything I heard. There's some things that really make sense. And one other thing I did want to mention related to, say, the pensions, John was right in when he was talking about, the current employees are paying a higher level. So anybody being hired now, I believe you said you were a 5%er, 7%er or whatever, there's not that many. Sorry, I said not all, not sorry, not the 5%ers.
5%ers.
And so, but what you'll find 30 years from now is that a good portion of the normal retirements, and if the state puts on various caps, et cetera, so, most people just get a decent pension. And as you're retiring 30 years from now, those employees would have contributed a significant portion to their own pension because of the rates, because of the investment rate of return, et cetera. The problem you have right now is the past dills, the unfunded portion, that people that have been working for years, their percentage may have been 7% or lower, at a lower rate, but they're retiring, making $100,000, $120,000 a year, getting 80% of that. So all of a sudden, they've got $100,000 a year pension, but it hadn't been, money hadn't been set aside for them. So the past service cost and the normal cost is two components of your actuarial valuation and what you need to contribute. Once that past service cost goes away, you'll find that the town's actual contribution will go down and be cut in half. And so it won't be that budget buster, but it's making up for the fact that you're only, I believe you're about 60% funded. The last, I took a look at the front of county retirements, and so you're funding $48 million, oh, actually, I think you're about $19 million worth of unfunded. And that has to be amortized right now to 2028, but could go up to 2040. But if you do that, you're just passing on and postponing the inevitable, which will keep that unfunded amount higher. Tough balancing act when you go through this, but, but those are a couple of things. Other things that could make a decision on, you say, your OPEB cost, that, I believe, Mr. Franny had talked about, you're about $40 million, I think it's about $48 million unfunded in the OPEB liability. If you go through some plan changes with your health insurance, that's certainly now available to communities as you go through that, that can have a dramatic effect on that $48 million, because that $48 million is based on the plan as understood now. So if things are changed, whether it's percentages or whether it's hitting what the GIC has as their benchmark plan for retirees, the actuary will take that into account, and you may see that drop considerably.
It should drop.
Right.
It should drop. I don't know how much, but it should drop. We are also talking, going to a, we're at 75, 25, going to 60, 40, and the percentage that will drop, that unfunded liability significantly. The chances of that happening, I have a better chance of winning the Miss America beauty contest. That won't happen anytime soon. So we're working on it.
But, yeah, but those are the type of things. And with those particular changes, those liabilities that you know are hanging over your head can be reduced, because these are actuarial liabilities as opposed to real liabilities. And like a corporation, a lot of times would get rid of that liability instead of having a defined benefit pension plan. They went to a defined contribution. So whatever they contributed that year, that satisfied their liability forever, and they didn't have to worry about what that pension may be in 20, 30 years when someone retired. Those are the biggest issues financially that I see, those fixed costs that you don't have a lot of control over. And one of the things that you also may see, and some of our communities have gone to the GIC or done plan design changes before this, is that the health insurance costs are still going up. And so what will happen sometimes is that the premiums that you're charged, you know, you're charging the employees, say it was $1,000 a month for that particular plan. Well, that plan hadn't, if you hadn't done anything, would have went up to $1,200, okay? But all of a sudden, you do plan design changes, it keeps it at $1,000. And it looks like they didn't save anything. What they did save is the cost, because the cost still goes up, the future cost. And so you may have savings because you're, you know, higher deductible, those type of things. But you may not see a big real dollar change. It's what you would have paid hadn't you done that. And so it's kind of a, sometimes a tough thing for people to understand. But that's some of the problems I've seen happen in the past that you really need to explain. The premium would have been 1,200 if we didn't do this. We did it, and we still, it would have been $900, but we still had a 10%, 11% increase, so that brought us back to $1,000. It gets a little bit confusing, but that's just telling you some of the things that are sometimes problematic with, it's a good thing to do from the standpoint of savings and managing costs, but it doesn't necessarily, an easy thing to explain right off the bat. What you have in front of you, and I believe everybody has copies of it, is that there's three different reports that are there. One is this report on federal awards, another one's a management letter, and one of them is an audit on the basic financial statements. And again, without going through in detail, what I'm going to say is the schedule of federal awards, and we'll address questions, Craig and I will address questions as you see fit, as you go through, through the chair or however you want to do it. But the report on federal awards, that's the federal report that's required if you receive over $500,000 worth of federal funds and spend that in any particular year. We need to do compliance auditing to those particular grants. In fiscal year 2011, you received about $1,003 worth of grants, mainly, most of it's all for educational purposes. If you did get awarded that community block grant, which would be a good thing, again, if you were awarded that, that would also be a federal grant, which would be required to audit the compliance with that. So all the different programs, as they noted earlier, would be taking a look at that as part of a single audit. part of the single audit to make sure that they're in compliance. And what you'll find is that we have what is called pretty much a clean audit opinion. We had one finding this year, and the finding was more of an administrative filing relative to, if you work on a particular grant one hundred percent of the time, the feds require that there's a semi-annual certification, say the teacher needs to sign saying, instead of doing a timesheet, all they have to do is certify and say, I worked on Title I the entire year, do that twice a year. We found that those, uh, signatures and the certifications weren't in place. I believe that finding was pretty much going away this year.
Yes, we've been working with the school department as a result of the finding during our audit, and they've already, in, in the process of implementing procedures, so we're very confident that that will be resolved in fiscal twelve.
And it's, and it's a minor finding, it's not something to come up with question cost, et cetera. We knew the teachers were able to verify, yeah, you do work there, you were budgeted for this position, it was your salary level, um, it just that, there was just some paperwork that was missing. But that's part of the compliance requirement that's, uh, needs to be documented. If an employee worked on various grants, so say if they worked on four different grants, there's different and, uh, more difficult time requirements, you'd have to document your time in a timesheet or something like that, that would say, work, you know, today on this particular grant tomorrow, et cetera. But that wasn't the case in part of our findings. The next report is, any questions on the schedule of federal awards? Okay. The financial statements, one of the good things on the financial statements, again, the, the financial statements have really a, a couple of parts, one's a, uh, management discussion, our audit opinion, management discussion and analysis, which in effect explains, hopefully somewhat plain English, the results of operations, the actual financial statements themselves, the notes, and then other required supplementary information. Here you'll find different disclosures relative to your pension plans, relative to OPEV, budget to actual statements, et cetera. Our audit opinion is the only thing that we own. We basically tell the readers of the financial statements that we've done audit procedures sufficient enough that we could render an impound on an opinion saying that these financial statements are in accordance with general accepted accounting principles, and in, in effect, there's no significant material in the statements in, in the presentation with the numbers or the notes. You receive what's called an unqualified opinion, which is the highest opinion that we can give. That doesn't mean it's perfect, but the, and it doesn't mean that every cent has been all, you know, accounted for right down to the penny, but if you were buying bonds in the town of Abington, this is presenting a financial position that is accurate and you can rely on. It doesn't mean that, you know, two thousand dollars that was spent in some particular grant wasn't miscoded, but it means that, uh, if your general fund balances are, are correct, your stabilization fund balances are correct, you know, your budget to actual statements are correct, those type of things. What you'll find from the results of operation is that, for Abington, you had a pretty good year from the general fund standpoint, that you were able to, um, increase your fund balance by about a million one, and get up to about a million four in total. That doesn't mean that you have, um, what you should have set aside for community aside, you know, you spend about forty million dollars a year in governmental operations. You would like to have about five percent as a minimum reserve, let's say your free cash, or your unrestricted, you know, and you're getting closer, you know, you're a little over three percent compared to the five percent. However, communities that are constantly AAA rated would have a combination of general fund reserves and stabilization reserves that would normally stay at a ten percent level, okay? And again, that gives you financial flexibility in order to, uh, get rid of any bumps along the way, whether it's to pay for the additional pension costs while a plan's being implemented, so you don't have to cut services in other areas, that you could maybe spread that out. But you also now have a plan, uh, in place that is start funding your stabilization fund. You get a few hundred thousand dollars in there at this point in time, which is good, building that up also, you know, helps your reserves. So I think it's a good year for Abington from the results of operation. However, what you'll find is that your, your budget actuals were in pretty good shape for your, for your expenditures. You had about five hundred and seventy thousand dollars' worth of deficit in your snow and ice this year, compared to about three hundred thousand dollars the year before. You budgeted eighty thousand dollars, you know, one year you spent six hundred and fifty, previous year you spent three eighty. That cycles through, and the town has to raise that particular deficit in the next recap. Your revenues are really where you had, created that one point one million dollar surplus. If you take a look at the budget to actual statements, you'll see the budget to actual statement gave you about a one point two, one point one million dollar surplus. Collections come in, better, you budgeted conservatively, and if you do that, what you'll find is you'll, you won't, your fund balance will always increase at least a little bit. You know, we find people that get in trouble, especially during tough economic times, if they try to budget their revenues too aggressively. And if you have a revenue shortfall, um, you may not have enough time for an appropriation to be reduced to offset that, that reduction. And that will turn into a deficit, and your free cash will be reduced, and so will your fund balances. So, um, the conservative and the accurate revenue budgeting is, is critical to make sure that, you know, you, you stay on, on track, to keep that going. Other than that, I don't wanna talk about the other things that I believe were important relative to OPEV and the pensions, unless you had questions on that. I think we probably may have talked about that enough, but those are things that, from a warning situation, I, I just made sure that that was part of it. Your enterprise funds all had positive cash flows for the year from operations, subsidized by a little over seven hundred thousand dollars' worth of general fund subsidies for the debt service, but when everything's taken into account, your, your results of operation, when you include the debt service, still generated a positive cash flow. And that's really what you wanna take a look at relative to budgeting that. Your long-term assets and liabilities, your debt, and your, your assets are important, but that's not how you live and breathe and budget, you still budget almost on a cash basis. And so it was a good sign, when you take a look at your statement of cash flows, that not only the general fund had that positive surplus, but so did your other two key operating, which is really the water and sewer funds. Other than that, Craig, can you think of anything else that we may wanna add in the financials or?
Well, I think it's important to note that if, if we've been paying attention to the financial statements in our general fund, the fund balance over the, the past few fiscal years, if we remember back in fiscal two thousand and nine, we actually had a budgetary deficit of approximately four hundred thousand dollars. So it's been prudent budgeting in, in our, our projections over the last couple of years that allowed us to get to about a million four surplus, which is, is, I think, very positive to note.
So, um, any other questions related to the finances overview? Good. And the last piece is the management letter. Now, a management letter is a critical document, so one of the problems is, we don't tell you all the good things you do, but you do it indirectly. And what I mean by that is that there's not any, what we consider, material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. These are all other matters, meaning that there are efficiency points in here, things that you should be aware of. However, you still had an unqualified audit opinion, you get your budget out in time, the audit's been done timely, and, and, and you reconcile your cash and receivables, all the important things on a timely basis. So that's, by not saying anything about material weaknesses and significant deficiencies, we're really telling you, overall, you're doing a good job, okay? Whether that makes sense to you or not, that's the only way we can say it and still, uh, get our management letter across. There were thirteen comments that we have listed in the management letter. Ten were for the prior year, a couple of the new. Four of the prior year comments were resolved. They were budgeting in, for the general fund, water fixed asset balances, ambulance receivables, and you implemented GASB fifty-four. Since they've been resolved, I'm not really gonna spend any time on those unless anybody had a question on those. Some partially resolved points that we recommended that there be a departmental policies and procedures manual set aside. Steps have been taken to start to document that, but there isn't one formal in there. As turnover occurs, sometimes it's good to have, and again, it's, we're not asking for giant books, but it's, it's more of what happens, who does what, um, and, and maintain a central file on all the critical, uh, policies and procedures that are maintained by all the, by all the departments. Again, people leave that are in critical positions, knowing what they did, how they did that, and the timing of that is important for the person coming in to replace that particular person, because most of the positions would need to be filled. You may have some attrition and, and not do that, but then that wouldn't be a critical position. So that's kinda the thing that we think started the process, but just needs to be completed as part of it. Similar to that, a disaster recovery plan, you do all the backups, there's, uh, security on your tapes, et cetera, but we don't have a formal document that we can audit to that says what happens in the eventuality that the system goes down. How do we process that? Who do we see? Where do we go? You can't just sit back and point to, well, we hired a new IT guy, which was fantastic. But what if he's down in, in Aruba? John's not here, you know, it's like, all right, what do we do? Well, you just need to go to a document, and somebody needs to be cross-trained in the eventuality that that does happen. Hopefully it never occurs, but it's good, just sound, uh, management risk control relative to your operations, you wanna make sure the payroll goes, gets out, vendors are paid, that you still be able to collect your receivables and stay in business even if the town hall burned down. How do you go through this particular process, and what do you go through? So, again, more of formalizing a lot of the things that if we conversationally talk to the people in control, we understand what they're going to do, and they have an understanding, but it's just more of just putting that document into place. Deposit and investment policy, it's recommended by the GASB Governmental Accounting Standards Board, talked to the treasurer before about that. All the investments, and we audit the investments to make sure that they're in compliance with mass general laws and investment policies, et cetera. But it's also a good thing to have in there to make sure that, uh, the funds are invested safely, with the relative amount of risk, depending on the type of funds, whether it's a trust fund, whether it's general operations, whether it's a capital bond funds, et cetera. And a good policy and procedures, um, would be approved by the board, so everybody knows what type of investments you want. You may to, you may wanna take and be more restrictive on the type of investments that may be allowed, to make sure that, um, one treasurer's consideration of risk may be different than the next person's. You know, depending if you talk to a financial advisor and take a look at all the investment vehicles outside for your 401Ks, some people, the same savings, the same, uh, job as someone else, somebody might be very aggressive in their portfolio, and somebody else may be very conservative. Each having their own considerations, but depending on who's making that decision, it's that person's decision. It's the same thing when you have a treasurer. Those type of decisions, the selectmen should know the treasurer's, uh, policies and procedures, and they have to abide by that. And if we have a document that says these are the policies and procedures, we can audit to that particular benchmark. If you don't have one, it's just mass general laws. Now, mass general law is, is conservative relative to that, but over the years, treasurers have been caught up in purchasing CDOs and other auction rate securities that in effect field, and, uh, and so there is a risk element that's out there, depending on your, your strategies. And so that's something that we'd just like to see formalized. You don't have to, it's recommended, but I think it's a, a procedure and a policy that extends beyond just one board or one treasurer.
Andy, do you have, could you provide us with draft policies?
Yeah, I mean, we have plenty of clients that have done that.
Yeah, is that something to get to us, just so we can?
Yeah, we can get that, so.
Yeah, if I could.
Get it down, pass it to John.
What Andy is saying, the two, out of all of the comments, the two that I'm most concerned about are the fraud risk assessment and deposit and investment policy, that I think we should have, you know, I think we had brought it up, I don't think you were here at that, on that particular meeting.
Yeah.
But that was one of the issues that, the two issues that I think we should hone in on for prior year, so if you do have anything that you could provide, I think that would be very helpful.
Right, we can, we can get that for the fraud risk assessment. Again, fraud risk assessment, going to the next point, similar type thing. It's just more of management going through and saying, are we at risk for the way we purchase things, the way we take in cash, uh, uh, processes and procedures? And it's really each department head's responsibility to sit back and evaluate the risk within their department. And some risks may or may not be financial, but usually, you know, from an accounting standpoint, they are, you know, financially, is my inventory, I have a lot of inventory saved down at Public Works, so I have inventory control overall.